Good morning. I call to order the August 13th, 2019, meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Mr. Ridgerson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
As you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second. Been moved and seconded that we approve today's agenda for the public forum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion does carry. Item number two.
RFA 167-19, road reclassification with Darren Fischel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Good morning Darren.
Good morning commissioners. This is a request to change the road reclassification from earth to gravel. Several years ago, the Road and Bridge Department built a detour for a bridge project on Thorstenberg Road. Dry Creek Road from Hedberg Road, the Thorstenberg Road was reshaped and gravelled for the duration of the project. Many of the local residents would like the classification to be changed from earth to gravel and for it to be maintained as such. The alternative for action is to allow the road to remain earth classified or change the classification to gravel. Staff recommends the classification of the road be changed to a gravel road. The road would serve the purpose of the local community and provide a detour when this section of Thorstenberg Road needs to be worked on in the future. We are seldom in favor of changing the status of a road to gravel. In this case, a lot of the work has already been completed. And it's also a benefit to the community when you consider that their fire and EMT services come from Marquette. The cost to reshape and gravel this section of roads is going to be about $10,000 and the dollars would come from the gravel road upgrade line item of the Road and Bridge budget, which has a current balance of $355,722. I have a map up here. The black line represents the paved Fallen Road coming south out of McPherson County to Fallen. This yellow dot is a bridge that we replaced in 2015 or 2016. This green line here represents the road that we are requesting to be reclassified to gravel. When they built that bridge, we upgraded this mile and about a half a mile this at about $50,000 cost. And then these red lines represent earth roads. So if you look coming up south, to get to Fallen, if this is closed somewhere in here, there is no really good way to get there if there's inclement weather and the Sungan Road or Coronado Heights Road, it's barely passable in good condition sometimes. The gray line represents roads where we have right of way, but there is no road there. They were, the right of way was open, but they were never improved. And so this would just provide those folks with access to Fallen should we need, and we will need to work on this section of road in the near future. There's some culvert pipes that are going to need to be replaced. And like I said, since most of the work, the culverts and stuff have already been done, I don't see any reason for this not to maintain, to be maintained as a gravel road. It's not anything that would happen overnight. You know, we wouldn't be running out there tomorrow because as you're aware of the flood, we have other priorities, but eventually we would like to get down there and get that shape back up.
Okay. Questions or comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment regarding this road? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the road reclassification from earth to gravel on the portion of Dry Creek Road as listed in RFA 167-19.
Second the motion. We have, the motion has been made and seconded that we approve RFA 167-19 road classification. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion does carry. We will move to item number three.
Jail project architect interview with trainer HL, Andrew Manley County Administrator.
All right. Before we go further, I want to clarify something that was in the paper last week that a clarification on, says following the presentations, each firm's sealed proposal will be opened and read aloud. The chairman said, no action is anticipated, but a decision will be made no later than August 30th to decide on whether or not to follow their recommendations. The August 30th deadline is a deadline to choose the firm, not the project, or no project. So I want to make that clarification. Okay. Thank you to trainer HL for being selected to participate in Celine County's request for proposals for architectural services. As discussed during the RFQ phase, the purpose of this process is to secure architectural, engineering, and appropriate consulting services for a potential jail project. Any significant infrastructure decision will be voted on by the citizens of Celine County. At the conclusion of the RFP process, an architectural engineering firm will be selected as the lead firm assisting the Celine County Board of County Commissioners in evaluating multiple potential infrastructure options. At this time, I will turn this over to County Administrator Andrew Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As previously identified, Celine County is considering multiple jail infrastructure options to combat an increasing inmate population. These options in no particular order or preference are option A, a new booking and release center off-site and remodel the existing jail; option B, new booking and release center onsite, remodel existing jail; and option C, a new greenfield site. It shall be emphasized that all of these options are equally being considered in addition to any alternative options the Board of County Commissioners has not yet already identified. The scope of work of the selected architectural firms to provide additional information on potential infrastructure options for the board to consider and eventually the citizens of Celine County to consider. Each firm will be allocated one hour. The first 25 minutes will be for presentations from the firms. A 20-minute question and answer session with the commissioners will follow the presentations. And then finally, the public will be allowed 10 minutes of questions or comments for the firms, which will be moderated as needed. After both firms have presented, commissioners will open sealed proposals, which will be read aloud. No action is anticipated at this time, but a decision is expected to be late, to be made no later than August 30th. The Celine County Board of County Commissioners will evaluate both firms based upon all available information during both the RFQ phase and the RFP phase. This information includes, but is not limited to RFQ submissions, public presentations, reference checks, and the final proposal cost. After all information has been received and evaluated, the Board of County Commissioners will contract with the architectural firm with the best all-inclusive proposal. The commission will not make their decision based solely on price, thus the firm with the lowest bid should not assume they have won based solely on being the lowest bid. The Celine County Board of County Commissioners reserves the right to, reserves the right to clarify information submitted. So with that, I would like to introduce our first firm, Trainer HL. We've got Jeff Lane there out of Topeka, Kansas. I have Jeff Lane. Forgive me if I butcher these last names, but John Eisenlau and Gwen, I'm not even going to try it. So.
She told us we could sit here, so we'll take you up on getting us all three in the same location. How's that?
Perfect. Welcome to Solana.
Thank you. I'll wait for John. Well, thank you again for having us back. We're excited to be here, excited to share a little bit more about who we are and what we're doing as a, as a firm and as a justice group. So Andrew, thank you for the introductions. I'm not going to introduce our team. We've been here and hopefully you remember who we are. If they have any of those types of questions, we'll reserve that for afterwards. So today, we want to talk a little bit more about design and operational trends. So we're going to share a couple of projects that we're currently working on and projects we've been working on that would, would kind of help understand a little bit more about the trends that are out there. We're going to talk a little bit about site analysis. We talked a little bit about that the last time, but we're going to go a little bit further in-depth on a project that we've currently walked through that is similar to what you guys will be doing here over the next four to six months. And then I'm going to talk a little bit, we'll talk a little bit about the bond referendum process and what that is for our team. Again, we are, as Andrew said, we, we live in Topeka, we work in Topeka, and we are a Topeka group. Our justice group's all over the country, so we do have offices in other areas, but we are local and we are national. We do work everywhere, so we're doing work in Tennessee, Texas, Missouri, you can see Virginia, Colorado. So we do it all over, but we're right here in Kansas as well. So I want to go right to the point and touch base on some of the trends. And these are some of the things that I don't think we shared before that may make some sense as we talk through the overall design and options down the road, okay? So flexible design. One of the things that we have really looked at as justice architects in jail design is flexible design. Creating design for housing units, office space, booking, those types of things that create the flexibility down the road, okay? Because right now, if you design a building that doesn't create that flexibility, what happens? So what happens with housing? Okay, we don't know what the next housing group may be. Right now, mental health is a big thing and it's going to continue to be that way. We see females doing what they're doing from a growth perspective across the country. And then we see transgender as, as an item that's continuing to come up and be a part of jails today, right? We don't know what the next piece is going to be, so we want to create housing units that allow for that flexibility for the sheriff and for others down the road to be able to accommodate those types of individuals. And then we also look at visitation centers. So right now, your, your community does video visitation or maybe comes directly to the, to the jail and does visitation for contact, non-contact type visitation. What we've also seen is an actual visitation center, a building that you go to, and all the visitation is there. That can be onsite, that can be a lot of different places, but that's something to take a look at and think about. It's an economical way to handle visitation. Prefab. So one of the things that we've also seen is the construction market has changed, right, is prefabrication. So whether that's plumbing and actually doing all the piping in a warehouse area, coming out and hooking it up. It's those types of things, prefab cells that are out there. Looking at those things as we go forward, right, and finding what fits the best for this project and for this county. All of those things affect schedule and they affect cost, right? And one of the things we've found over the years is doing prefab, whether it's plumbing, whether it's electrical, whether it's other furnishings that are out there. If you can do those prefab in a warehouse, there's cost savings because the individuals that are doing that in the warehouse from a labor perspective are maybe more economical than somebody that's actually out on the field. So those are some of the things that we talk about and think through so we find where those best fit and how that works. Daylighting. I think it's really important, no matter if it's a new facility, existing facility, how we bring daylighting into a facility, both for inmates and for staff. Seeing it snow, that's important. You may not think so because you're out and about all day, but for staff and for inmates, being able to see it snow, being able to see it rain, know that the sun is moving east to west, and knowing when it's nighttime is very, very important. And it's important both from a normalization standpoint and therapeutic standpoint for inmates and also for staff. They want to be able to go to places, whether it's a break area that breaks out and gets them away from the inmates for half an hour, 15 minutes, and to be able to break out and go somewhere and have time to see what's going on in the world. Those are really important pieces. And it helps with retention and it helps with recruiting from the staff end. And on the, on the end, as it relates to inmates, it helps with the fact that they are calmer and there's less issues in housing. And we've seen that in some of the facilities that we've done. It also can help with lowering operation costs. In one of our smaller facilities, we did daylighting and they actually don't run their lights during the day if it's a nice sunny day. They have their night lights on and that's about it, or egress type lighting on and that's it. The rest of it is not run. So, so it helps with that. One of the other pieces that's important as we look at the overall design of a facility, we talked about housing a little bit and some of the other pieces, is booking. Simple process. Sheriff doesn't want to have his staff running around in a booking area trying to figure out where to go. Make that process simple, both from a standpoint of bringing law enforcement in with the arrestee, bringing them into the facility for custody, and then allowing that process to happen. That's the simple process. It also helps with staffing. So trying to find the right fit so that we don't, so we can, for lack of a better term, operate it in an efficient way, okay? Because right now, if we have multiple stations for individuals, you're now got more staff. If we can look at how that works, that's great. So one of the things we did at Johnson County is we actually did an animation for their booking, central booking facility. And we've taken that animation over time. They do about 15,000 to 16,000 bookings a year. And we look at that and we've actually been able to now take that same information and look at, okay, medical screening, photo, fingerprints, going through all the paperwork, property storage. We know now how long it takes to actually go through each one of those types of areas, both from an inmate and a staff perspective. So we're able to right-size. So the bottom picture there is actually Reno County. And we did that shortly thereafter and we looked at taking that same information and we placed that and looked at how to operate in a, in Reno County with less bookings than what Johnson County has. So that helps us as a tool. Doesn't mean it's the right thing for, for everybody, but it at least gives us a tool to start with and to look at as it relates to the facility. The other piece is medical housing. It's really, really important to think about medical housing as it relates to adjacencies to the booking area. One is it helps with staffing needs because at the end of the day, you have staff that are going to be there from the medical standpoint during the normal business hours, right? But if we can, we can have that adjacent booking staff can actually observe what's going on in medical, okay? And those types of things is to do the rounds and the roving. So it helps with some operational costs down the road. If that's detached or somewhere else, you've got staff that you, you may have to add to the project or look at differently. The other thing that this does is it allows for standardizing the rest of your housing units. So now you have one medical unit, right, that does the specialized unit that we need to have, but now we can create standardized units for housing and/or standard, more flexible units for down the road. So those are some of the things that, that we are seeing in the trends as jail design continues to move forward. Forward button.
Forward button. Jeff talked about kind of program trends in my mind, so what I'll do is I'll, I'll show you two examples of what I would consider policy trends in the industry right now. And last time I was here, I think I was pretty vocal about the fact that I think that reducing your bed needs as much as possible should be sort of the end game and the end goal. This is a client that we're working with right now.
Jeff, if you can, go back to the microphone. Yeah, because the TV, we're on the, everybody in the room can hear you, but the TV is...
So this is a client that we're working with right now in, in Tennessee. And what they decided at the end of the day, we explored ways of expanding their existing facility and building a new facility, much like you're going through right now. And what was determined through deep conversations with the sheriff's department, the whole legal team, was that rather than expand the Blount County Jail in Tennessee, what if we actually build what we defined as a new transition center for the community? And this is a diagram of the building that is under consideration right now. They have purchased a farm on 62 acres outside of downtown Blountville and will be moving into the next steps of this phase. But what they've decided to do was they've taken what I'll consider their in custody and out of custody individuals that are eligible to be moved into the transition center. So keep this in the back of your mind for a minute. They're not going to expand the jail. The jail stays just the way it is. They've determined that 200 to 300 people could be moved to this new facility, which is a lower custody level. So it's built more inexpensively than a normal jail. Their drug court is in here and there's two, roughly 200 active individuals in their drug court right now, males and females. You'll notice the females to the, to the south, the males are to the north. All of the programs that they need for drug court are in this building. They're scattered around the county right now, so they consolidated all their drug court needs in one location. These individuals leave the facility, they go to work, they come back, they reside here. So they process through the booking area in and out of the facility. So they work all day long. The green area in between is all classrooms and programs, so this is very program intensive. So when I, when I say policy changes, what I mean is there was a decision made amongst the leaders that they're going to recover and rehabilitate people in a facility outside the jail environment. Now, in addition to what's inside the fence line or in custody, there's also out of custody functions to the right, community corrections, day reporting, things of that nature. So you have people out of custody that come to the facility and there are people in custody that come to the facility. So this was their kind of breakthrough moment where let's not add on to the jail. Let's leave the jail just the way it is. Let's fix it if it needs to be fixed so the sheriff can operate the facility more effectively, but let's move the specialized people to a new facility and we'll recover them in a different way. So that's one example. Now here's another example that I'll share with you. This is also in Tennessee, and the reason why Tennessee is so active right now is that they have a very significant drug epidemic in, in eastern Tennessee at the moment. I'm sure most of you have seen that on the news, but, and we can put you in touch with any of these counties and you can talk about what their solutions were. This one, in my opinion, is one of the more forward-thinking counties of what they're trying to accomplish here. In the green box at the top, they've determined that they have three eligible offenders in their system. This is Sullivan County, Tennessee right now, where again, rather than doing a massive expansion to the facility, let's design housing at the existing facility so we can put people in specialized programs so that we can recover them, heal them, and repair them. So what the county's doing right now is non-DOC post-conviction offenders, pre-trial diversion, and first-time technical probation offenders are all eligible for this program. And what happens is they cycle into specialized housing units in the jail, mental health and drug addiction housing units, and I'll show you a layout shortly. And then what they do is they take them through a step-down process of cognitive therapy, then they have an education phase, and they actually assign a mentor to them. So when they leave the facility, they actually have a mentor that helps them reintegrate into society. I'm quite fascinated by this project personally because I think it's really kind of at the cutting edge of helping people get out. So when I say policy changes, what I'm saying again is these are changes programmatically within the facility that we all have to agree, assign the proper staff to it, determine the end game, the goals, and develop a strategy. This is Sullivan County's existing facility and it is very complicated. This is the original jail down here in the center, and they have males and females in this facility, and it's very problematic. It's all dorms. They built an extension about 10 years ago that was supposed to be the dormitory. So the big idea was we keep all of the high custody people in the jail, we'll move some of the lower custody up to the hill. That never worked out. The sheriff is actually running, sheriff, if you can believe this, two jails right now. There are two kitchens in each of these facilities. The males and females are spread all over the place. It's a huge problem. They have 1,000 people in this facility today. So with the program that I just described to you, what they want to do is they want to add on housing so that they can initiate their recovery program through the three different phases for males in the main facility. And then I'll skip ahead. They want to put all the females in the other facility so they have complete gender separation and they can administer their programs in two different locations. And again, the goal is to run people through the program that fit those three categories. Not everybody can run through their program necessarily, but this is their solution to drive down their bed, their bed needs. And I'll let Glenn talk about a new build strategy.
So the last time we were here, I talked a little about Green County, Missouri, which the county seat for that Springfield. I'm going to dive in a little bit more on that and talk a little bit more about the process we went through. I think there's some similarities in that that project, we, like you, they had several different options on the table that ranged, you know, from everything, from a small addition to building completely new. So with that, the initial option we looked at, well, their initial need was they needed more housing. That was the big thing that was driving the project. They're overcrowded. They're actually currently, right now, have a temporary jail of some modified trailers that they're doing for housing as, along with some out of county. So their biggest need was housing. They didn't have, they don't have special needs housing for mental health and other things like that. They're limited on their program space because they're overcrowding. So their biggest need that was driving the project was additional housing. But along with that, their booking was, is too small, it doesn't function very well, a lot of the issues Jeff was talking about. And then also, once they add additional beds, they're going to need an expanded laundry kitchen. So the initial options we looked at was what, what can we do actually on the site they're on? They currently have their historic courthouse along with their jail and their courts and actually a small county administration building, all on their site, as you can see in these little diagrams. So there's about two locations on that site that could fit a small addition, so prioritizing their needs, if we looked at how much, how many beds, how much housing space could we fit there? So we tried to maximize as much as we could and look at what kind of renovations could we do within the existing building to do that. We kept coming up a little short on their needs for actually their bed needs, along with, we felt like we were not really achieving their goals with their, what they needed for their renovation. So the next option we evaluated was, they knew they could get some, some lots across the street, so we looked at what if we build an addition that connected across to the existing jail? So we're both using their existing space plus building them new housing, some mental health and program space, along with new sheriff's office. This in general was working. We were going vertically about four stories. And as far as getting the right amount of space, we came up with a really good layout, but along with their bond referendum, they included their staffing costs within that, their future staffing costs, knowing they were expanding their jail, so there was going to be additional staffing costs. So the dollars we could never get to work with, by the time we built the amount of space that they needed, their staffing numbers, they couldn't get to work. It was, they were spending way too much on staffing, partly because they were going to be more or less operating two facilities, a little bit like John was talking about Sullivan County. There was a lot of movement in between the two. There was going to be a lot of inmate movement, there's going to be a lot of movement with food and laundry and other items like that. So the third option we evaluated was what if we go completely offsite and build brand new jail, brand new sheriff's office? This allowed us to get some really efficient spaces laid out for staffing. It also gave us some really good housing layouts that we were able to provide programming actually on each housing pod and have all the specialized spaces they needed for mental health and segregation and other needs like that. Build the booking space they needed, build laundry. The other issue with the, both of the options with their downtown site was that they, there was no future expansion. Or if there was, they were going to have to acquire additional lots that they weren't sure how available those were ever going to be. So once we did that first addition or the current addition, that was, they were kind of stuck then what was going to be the next step. So the site that they're looking at allows them to actually, you know, potentially double their housing if they were ever need that. Hopefully that's never the case. But it also gives them space if other programs change or they need, they need to expand the sheriff's office, the county has other needs, the sheriff's department has other needs. They have other space in that location. So it was able to then, we're actually building more square footage, but they were able to get their staffing costs down enough that we were kind of able to flip those numbers that we were spending more on that initial construction cost, but their long-term staffing costs were less. So it allowed them to get the building and space they needed within the budget they were working with. Back to Jeff.
Thank you. So a couple of things. We shared some examples today. These are not, we're not proponents of one or the other. What we're hoping that you gain from, from the experience that we've shared, the first time we... we came and presented to you, to the second afternoon session, to today, is that we have a breadth of experience across the board, so we can provide options to you, no matter what that is. And we can talk about those from an operational standpoint and an architectural standpoint, and bring a multitude of experience to that. So a bond referendum process. For us, we've been pretty successful being able to get that accomplished, both here in the state of Kansas and other locations. And I, you know, as I put this slide together, and as I thought about it for the last month or so, I struggled, because there's a secret sauce to getting a bond passed. And I'm going to share that with you, and it may not seem like a secret sauce, but there is. And everybody now is going to know what that is. But I will tell you that there's three pieces that are critical to passing a bond referendum, okay? One is, identify the problem and share that with the public. If you can't identify the problem, it's kind of hard to come up with a solution. Share what that problem is, okay? And if the problem is, your current facility isn't functioning correctly, if your current facility doesn't have the operational pieces that make sense, give tours. Every one of these that we're going to talk about are the other three that I'm going to share here in a minute at the tail end. All of them, and I share this with other groups, and John and I were talking about this last night, we do this everywhere. We talk about, open it up and have the public come see your facility. The other thing is, to this, is transparency. If you're not transparent with the public, with the staff, and with yourself, you're not going to buy the project. You're not going to believe in the project, okay? No matter who you are. Staff needs to be involved. Staff understands operation today. Staff also understands, because they've been to other facilities, what operation is and what it can be. And they know what they want it to be. They know how to make it better. Get them involved, because when they get involved, they talk about themselves and talk about things that they're going to do, and then they talk to the public about how this is going to operate so much better. It helps with retention, it helps with recruitment. Whether it's an existing add-on to the existing building or a new facility, all of those things need to happen. The second thing, or the third thing, is workshops. The workshops are imperative to what we're trying to accomplish. First off, it brings everybody to the table. You talk about what the issues are, what the solutions are together as a group. You hear everybody, okay? And you listen. And everybody now understands what those are, and we're creating a solution together as a group. Those are really, really important pieces to bring to the table. Our track record has been pretty good. Thomas County, over sixty percent passed the first time. Ellis County, over seventy percent passed the first time. Reno County, the second time, passed over fifty-five percent. We understand that. We understand the Kansas values, because we live here in Kansas. We understand the frugality that needs to be shown to the community, to you, and to the sheriff's office, and that's really, really important, no matter what your solution is or who you pick here at the end of the month. Those are the pieces that need to be brought forward to make sure that this project is a success for this community and for you guys. That's really what it's up for us is about, is we want it to be successful for you. It's not ours. We're the pencil, and we're going to sit down with you and create your building for you. We've shown you a lot of things here over the last few months, both in our RFP presentations and what have you. We're excited about this kind of work, and there's not a lot of architects that are, but we are, and we're passionate. And we're ready to get started today. This is an exciting, exciting project to be a part of. So I thank you, and we'll open it up for question and answer.
I want to relate a little bit to Reno County, simply because they're, number one, they're close by. Most of us, I think all of us actually, have toured that facility. I know that that was one of your projects. I don't, I'm not finding it anywhere in the book. How big was the population for that jail? What is it designed to handle?
So it's designed to handle two-hundred-and-fifty.
Okay. So if we were to choose that option, or choose you, and say we were at three-hundred beds, and I assume that that footprint would be able to work off of something like that, I'm just throwing a number out there, because our population seems to be a little bit higher than theirs, in terms of the jail portion of it. So if we, does that mean you would have to expand classrooms, expand the kitchen, laundry, et cetera?
Right.
Would there be a cost savings for us if we were to choose their footprint from a design standpoint? Would that help us?
So I want to share something, and I tried to share this, I think we did. First off, we're not a firm that's going to take a project that we've already done and plop it on a site for you. I have no problems talking about what Reno is about, what it does, and how it may fit with some of the needs that you have, Commissioner. But I think your community would like to probably have a conversation about what it is that makes sense for your community. As it relates to that facility, yes, it's two-hundred-and-fifty beds, and the kitchen, laundry, exercise, all the infrastructure pieces are mapped out for actually three-hundred beds. So if you, when you toured that facility, if you actually drove around, there's a pie-shaped area that's not built currently. That's their next-step expansion. So that actually allows them to get to three-hundred at the end of the day, so they can expand two units there and get to that about three-hundred number. So I'll just leave it at that.
I like your response, okay? Basically, I mean, I take it, is it, Bob, you don't know what you're really talking about there, so you need to go with a different facility. And I appreciate that, I really do. I like the fact that you guys have experience with both existing sites and greenfield sites, having those options available to us. Tell me one other thing, and then I'll open it up for everybody else to start talking. But our current facility, most of it, is fifty years old, and it's my understanding that most jails, life expectancy is somewhere in the twenty-five to thirty-year range. What, you know, if you're talking a fifty-year facility, what's, you know, what's the likelihood to renovate that and make it feasible and make it worthwhile for our cost?
Yeah, that's very good. I think what we've talked about here, both from a Green County's perspective, we've looked at other facilities. We did the same thing in Reno. We actually looked at their facility, and it just, from a functionality standpoint, the facility wasn't going to allow for the efficiencies that a new facility would do. Doesn't mean that that's not the right solution. So I want to jump to Johnson County for a minute and their central booking, because that's actually an existing facility that we renovated. So we took, the lower level was all office space, and then everything else in the tower is all cell and housing, okay? So we actually took that and made that their central booking. That was their envision, that's what they wanted it to be. So we created all the booking, medical, office space wing, and transport on the lower level, okay? And then we refreshed the upper portion, but it was masonry, detention cells, or detention doors and frames, sliders and everything else, and we did some rework there, from a standpoint of just making sure we repaired it. They're now using that as their female housing, okay? So it's being used, and it's being done. So those things can happen within your building as well. Looking at it, that's an option, and that's, it's how to make sure that we look at the right spaces that make sense to be in locations, and can we reuse the housing? I did tour your facility with the sheriff a long time ago, and I can tell you that there's probably some pieces in there that don't meet ACA today, probably don't meet ADA either. And so those are the other things that we'll have to take a look at as we go through that, and codes.
Building codes.
And building codes. So those are things that you may spend a little bit more dollars on to get them up to speed. So those are just some things that I think we can look at. But can we? Yes. We can take that existing facility and expand on it and make it better, if that's the option that makes the most sense for this community.
Okay. Thank you for those responses. As I open this up to the remaining commissioners, also want the jail committee to know that this portion is also for them, if they have questions or responses. I'd like for them to voice those also, so.
Just to continue with that last thought, I mean, to use an existing facility, you don't have to buy land, go through eminent domain, you've got infrastructure in place. So, I mean, there are some positives to that. My question is, and I agree with your statement that reducing bed space needs to be the end game, so I appreciate your thoughts on that. Tell me what trends and designs are out there that continue to help us reduce bed space by building, let's just say we build a jail. What is being done in design to create programs that help get people out quicker? Because one of our problems here is that people are in way too long.
Sounds good. I'm going to tag-team this with John, so I'm going to answer a tidbit, because I'm going to go back to your comment of Reno County and what he was able to do, and then John talk a little bit, I think, because I think there's some pieces that can make sense too. So to your point, what we were able to do there is create program space. So we created classroom spaces, things that he didn't have, and we were able to do that in a well and efficient way. We also created areas where volunteers and other programmers could actually come into that building safely and feel like they had a place they could go to. They have a programs person that is also looking at how to do certain things, whether that's GED classes, whether that's AA classes, whatever that may be. The other thing we did on that project is, we created a courtyard. And I don't know if you had an opportunity to tour that courtyard, and I haven't been back for a while, but when we first started that, he wanted to use part of that as a garden, because he wanted to create some life skill opportunities for those individuals. So we do talk about those things, and we talk about what makes sense for you, and if those are the things that make sense, we get those incorporated. I think one of the things we talked about, both in our innovative packet and then also in our proposal, is those are usually the first things that go in that VE session. And if we're advocates as a group, recognizing that that's the important part of this project, because that's what's going to keep the numbers down, then we all advocate for it, and we find other ways to get the dollars where it needs to be at the end of the day, and they don't go away. John, what else are you seeing?
I guess I'd probably go back to this.
Swing that microphone over to you, please.
I'd probably go back to the Sullivan County example again, because it's a current client, where they took a certain classification level of individuals. In this case, they're pre-trial individuals. It was such a high quantity of people within the facility, and they focused specifically on them and a way to provide programs, in their case, a specialized housing unit with the proper programs in place at the housing unit, so the public could come in and out, the therapists and so forth that are supporting that effort. But identify a population that can be improved or repaired as quickly as possible within your classification level. I'm sure Jim's looked at, you know, the specific individuals within the facility, but focus on that particular population and reduce that as much as possible and quickly. But in the case of Sullivan, they actually wanted to put all the programs on the actual housing unit and design a specialized housing unit just for those individuals. So they really had a targeted approach to the individuals that they could recover very quickly. That's an example inside the facility. The other example I showed, which maybe is a little more extreme, where you take a population, like your drug court, if it's as high as one-hundred or two-hundred people, expand it. If it's successful, expand it even further, and then remove it and put it in its own area where it can actually function at a higher degree of efficiency, and then provide housing in that location, and develop a whole program right around those individuals, those specific individuals. So there's an example of it inside the facility with the pre-trial, or outside the facility if your drug court numbers are running over a hundred or close to two-hundred, that Blount County is. But I would say, in summary, find that population that you can target, and then we could work collectively on that particular population and drive that number down.
But you have to create that space when you're building it.
Yes, you do.
Instead of just having space to house.
Correct.
You know, inmates.
Correct.
Right.
Yes. And the trend in the industry is more and more of those spaces actually on the unit. So when Jeff was talking about recreation and quiet spaces and classrooms and offices, if we go back to.
Which one?
Go back to Sullivan's floor plan, just for a minute. They, the sheriff's department actually wanted, this is the sheriff's operations center up front with the jail administration folks in it as well. They actually don't want to function that way. They actually asked us to provide offices throughout the entire complex, so they kind of decentralized their staff into areas so they could have better coverage within the facility and better access to offices as well. So the physical environment, where normally the whole sheriff's operation, and typically the jail admin is inside the secure perimeter, maybe near the central booking area, they wanted to basically spread the staff and decentralize them throughout the facility, so they could be more effective and help people in and out of the facility for therapy sessions.
So some of these projects you're talking about with the program spaces, are you able to track success? Have you seen results? Do you follow, you know, contact them five years later and say, or do they send you an email that says, hey, our crime's gone?
No, there's no crime going away. There's no crime going away. So I will share this, yes, we do. So Randy Henderson at Reno County, so he had a GED program. I'll share this one with you, because I think this one will be right up, he probably even shared it with you, and I may get the numbers wrong. He sent me an email with a bunch of things, but he does that on a regular basis. With the GED piece that he had, so he wasn't able to have that program in his current facility. So once we built the new, once he built the new facility, we were able to do that, and he had GED. So the first year, I think he had two or three individuals get in the program. Since that building has been built, he's had twenty-one individuals actually graduate from the GED program and leave. Out of those twenty-one individuals, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, he had, he has had only seven come back to his facility. And part of it was this, because I asked him, I said, well, man, that's a pretty good number, first off, okay? Secondly, why are they coming back? And he says, because we didn't have a mentor, we didn't have somebody they could go to other than their family. And that's where the problem had started. So because they went back to the same environment they were in before they went to jail, right? They got back into the same scenario, the same ways that they were. So when John talks about mentorship program, that was one of the things, when we were talking about that, I said, man, that's great. I'm sharing that with Randy. So we're going to, I'm going to send that to him. Randy's doing a lot of other things from an AA standpoint and other programs, faith-based programs, and mental health pieces as well. He's working on those statistics. Again, his facility's pretty new, so he didn't have a lot of those. I can share that Douglas County is doing some of the same things, and they're seeing at least twenty-five percent are not coming back right now. Part of it is, is they have something similar to this community in the fact that they're housing out-of-county quite a few individuals, because we're working on a new facility for their, a new addition for them. And so they're not able to bring the good guys into their facility and see the programs and use the programs. So I think that number, when we're done with that facility shortly, will actually help him, help them do exactly what Reno's doing. Did that answer your question?
I'll answer that a little differently, and I'll use, let's see. I'll use Blount County as an example. When we started working with Blount County, there were a hundred and ten people in the drug court, recovery court, as they call it. And the issue, they couldn't put more people in their recovery court or their drug court, because the people that within their drug court and recovery court report weekly to the judge, number one. They live outside of the jail, and they typically live with other family members or friends. And that's problematic, because they don't necessarily live with them for an extended period of time. They usually end up back on the street, they end up in trouble again. So the county basically developed a program where if we could figure out a way to provide them housing, so they were more stable, they would show up for drug court and drug recovery on a regular basis. So this particular concept, the county is providing actual housing in lieu of them living with their family members, so there was more consistent. lieu of them living with their family members, so there was more consistency to their lifestyle. When they initiated this program, they now have, this facility will provide upwards of 300 individuals, males and females. So, their success, to your question, Andrew, is more that they can expand their program, and they can house more people and recover them by virtue of providing the proper environment that's specifically tailored for them. If they leave their current procedures in place, people move in with their loved ones and sisters and so forth and family, they get kicked out of the house, they end off the program. There was some more stability by creating a situation that was more stable like this. Obviously, it's an investment, but again, it draws people out of the jail. The jail does not have to be expanded. This facility would expand slowly over time to accommodate, back to my earlier comment about a very specialized group of individual, but focus on them, drive the numbers down.
Well, I know that we have some support in the community, I think, in this project. But with that support comes skepticism. And that skepticism, almost to 100%, surrounds programs, classrooms, those types of, what are we gonna do about that? We'll support you if you get going on this kind of stuff. So, that is a big deal. But, you know, and it's something that personally I don't know a lot about, so.
All right.
I might.
Chime in.
Yeah. What I might suggest is that at least some of the clients that we're working with, with these real specialized programs, there's no doubt that some of the people we're working with right now would be more than happy to come talk to you about what's working with their programs and what's not working. And frankly, it would be interesting to put some of them into the design process early on, if you're interested in hearing about some of their programs, because they can speak to them much more specifically than we can. But they're very passionate about it. But we have some counties-
Yeah, we do.
-that I don't see why we couldn't-
We can bring anybody.
Bring them in, and they could discuss some things that are working or not, or maybe some things that they wouldn't do again, possibly. Some lessons learned to their approach. But there's no question that this is a newer trend in the industry, and it's happening more and more. And I think more and more counties are being faced with it, and-
Right. And we have a, I mean, John talks about nationally, we have that ability to bring those individuals in, so that's not a problem.
Absolutely.
We also have folks, Mike Brower, who's at Douglas County, and I know Sheriff, you're part of the reentry piece that he's doing across the state. But we actually had him come when we were doing Reno County and talk to the community at one of our town hall meetings, just to talk about programs. Because Randy didn't, Randy and his staff didn't have that either. I mean, they had some programs, but they didn't have a lot. And to your point, Commissioner, there wasn't a lot of knowledge base there. So, Mike Brower actually came to one of the town halls and just spoke about programs and talked about what those are and asked some questions. So, being able to have those resources to come to the table, I think we can bring anybody that makes sense for you or your community that would help with the process.
Absolutely. Questions? Any more comments from the commissioners, jail committee people? Mr. Robertson, please step up.
Good job, guys, and folks. Couple summary comments. You're talking about trends, and we all know that there's a saying, plan for the long term, build for the short term. Trends come and go. So, how do you handle this flexibility of design to handle the future trends? Because in Sullivan County, if you're building that facility, it's handling a very special population. If that special population changes up or down, then you have to make accommodations either in the existing facility or in a different facility to handle the future growth. 50-year lifecycle cost is not what we see typically, but it's a reality. And so, I need to hear a little bit more, I'd like to hear a little bit more about this flexibility of design and how you accommodate that and don't overbuild, which has a cost implication.
I'm gonna touch first, and then I'm gonna let you go, John. So, a couple different things that we've done. So, if you go to projects that we've done and been a part of, and I apologize, I'm gonna go back to three projects that I think make a lot of sense, and then I'm gonna talk about a smaller project. So, Douglas County, the addition we did at Johnson County, and then Reno. All of those housing areas that we designed there, okay, are flexible. And what I mean by that, Jim, is that they're all built the same. So, as females change or some other group changes from a standpoint of classification, they can use any of those areas and shift individuals around as they need to. So, it doesn't lock you in on this is my female pod because it's designed this way, okay? This is my special needs pod because it's designed this way. There may be pieces that make sense in a special needs pod that's a little different, but creating that ability for the sheriff to be able to take special needs, and maybe that's now overflowing for female, those types of things we look at. As it relates to program spaces and those types of things, the other thing that I would share is trying to get those in an area of the building planning that allows for expansion and/or allows for those to change over time, because a lot of that's done via technology and things along those ways. So, getting those pieces plugged in, those are, I think, are where we would see flexibility in design. Also, creating spaces and/or housing that when you expand and/or change the classification, doesn't mean you have to change your staffing, okay? Because if it means you have to change your staffing, then at that point, your operational costs change, which then goes up. So, that's counterintuitive. John, why don't you talk a little bit about some of the other things we've been doing?
I think, I think you, the first thought that comes to mind, Jim, is probably keeping the housing units somewhat standardized in their approach. We need to agree with the sheriff, obviously, on what size that housing unit needs to be. That's typically the struggle. Is it a 24-bed, a 32-bed, a 64-bed unit? That's, in my mind, that's the hardest thing to land on, so that over time, Sheriff, you can grow and move people around the facility. So, what's the magic number in that housing unit, agreeing that it's probably gonna be a cell housing unit? I'm finding in the industry right now that there are very few clients that want to build dorm space at the moment, that cell space, to Jeff's point, if it's a 32-bed unit, for example, and given the size of your community, I would imagine you probably don't want housing units much larger than that, maybe even smaller for classification reasons. But standardizing the housing unit, no question about it, not having a variety of spaces that are hard for you to move officers from one location to the other, so there's easy wayfinding in the housing unit. I hear that a lot, that housing units look too different. And when you move officers around, it's hard to readjust to a house, housing unit that may have different sightlines. So, standardizing the housing units, I think what I'm seeing more in terms of flexibility on the staff side is that a lot of counties are drifting away from enclosed offices. They're working in more open office and communal areas. They're working back in the housing units that I was trying to describe on Sullivan County, where the traditional jail administration, in what I've seen for years, is it's located next to the booking area, because that's usually where the most flow is. Now, I'm seeing more of the staff wanting to disperse themselves around the facility, maybe using your offices as classrooms, more multipurpose use spaces in the facility, so things aren't quite as designated for individuals. You know, here's your office, here's your office, little more flexible environment the way things lay out. And the booking area, Jeff touched on it, is probably the, one of the more difficult things to remain flexible with. But again, what I'm finding is there's less cell space in the booking area, depending on who you're dealing with. And you can have a more open environment, if you have that type of clientele, and they're obviously managed properly, where the booking space can be a little more flexible, too, so that you just don't have as many hard walls in your booking area to necessarily reconfigure long-term. But I think there's definitely trends in the housing area, in the dispersment of the programs, more flexible staff spaces, Jim. And then I would definitely say the booking area needs to, that's the hardest piece of the puzzle to lay out in a detention facility, in my opinion. But I think that, if that remains flexible as well.
Can I do one follow-up?
Sure.
Just real quick. How do you respond to the argument that if we want to be flexible, we build to the higher classification, not the lower classification, significant cost implication?
So, first off, disagree with that statement. I think that what you will find over time is if you actually design the facility the way we talk about with the light, natural light, good space for programs and those types of things, you will have those that need to be in the most secure location, but you will have the majority of those that won't. And so, we have to right-size that and have that conversation, and talk about where your needs are, but recognizing that you don't have to build to the max today. That's a different trend than what we, that was, that was years ago. We're really seeing, and John even talked about here, the transitional housing piece and those types of things. So, we need to talk about that, talk about your needs, and understand that that's viable for what we're trying to do within this facility.
And I think, Jim, that the configuration of the cell could be the same, but the way that cell is structured, for example, you don't necessarily have to ground every cell in the cell-
Right.
...for a minimum or median custody individual. And you may not need a 60-minute glazed window in the door.
Right.
I mean, we'd have to discuss that with the sheriff, exactly what those classification levels are. But the room itself could look the same in the plan, Sheriff, but the way that actual cell is built and the windows it may be in and the hardware on the doors, that could be a level that's slightly lower based on the classification of that particular space.
And if the environment influences the behavior?
Yes, absolutely.
Exactly.
I mean, just simple things like a rec yard on a housing unit. It's amazing how many facilities we go into, and those simply don't exist. And the sheriff's department has to move people around, or people can't recreate, or just have some vision of the outdoor daylight. It's remarkable how many places that just doesn't take place in.
Andrew, how are we doing on time?
We're doing okay on time. We probably have one or two more questions from this group.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I don't have one.
I, in your secret sauce and in what is going to, what it's gonna take to get us through this process, you said, we gotta identify the problem. The problem is, obviously, we're spending too much money out of county housing inmates. That I think we all agree with. But there is a philosophical problem or divide, I think, in how you take care of that problem, where, you know, there'd be some that just says, let's build a 400, 500-person jail, and then there's some that are on this side, you know. And so, what do you see your role in helping a commission that maybe is divided, or a public that is divided on which way to go? How can you help us work with that?
Right. I think first off is through our workshop process that we talk about, we will have that open dialogue, okay? So, we can actually then understand what it is, and you pointed out what those problems are. There's other pieces to those problems. The other element to that is the education. So, part of it is, is you have a group here today as public, right, that are interested in this project. You have other people that are out in the public, they're gonna vote on this. Having them come and understand what programs are, right? Having them come and understand what holding is. And talking through that allows for us to build a consensus that at the end of the day, everybody's nodding their head going, yes, that's what we need to do, okay? So, those are the types of things that we do through the workshop and the town hall meetings that we have as part of our process through the referendum. The other thing is, is educating your group. That may mean bringing in other individuals that we just talked about from other counties and other programs, to be able to talk through what their finding the successes are and what the failures are, or the non-successes, and how does that relate to what we're trying to do here. Those are the types of things that I think really will help at the end of the day to build a consensus and find the right direction.
If I might add, too, one of the, one of the tools that we're using right now that's pretty effective is that as we kick off a project, we typically put a survey out to not only all of you individuals with the sheriff's department, and we solicit some public opinion on it as well. And we have about eight questions that we ask by way of a survey. We compile all that information, and then we have a meeting to discuss what the overall objectives of the project are. And we establish those objectives, and there's typically at least 10, 12, dozen, something like that. And we distill down all those objectives, and we come up with a pretty strong mission statement that we all kind of agree on. So, there's a little bit of a roadmap up front to make sure that we build some consensus on what it is that we're trying to do. And we have had situations where the mission statement is, we're gonna build a brand-new facility and just house more people. That could be an outcome of that consensus-building exercise. One would hope not, but I would recommend that we go through that process. As corny as it may sound, it actually, it is pretty effective, and it's very interesting to see some of the responses to the surveys.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, early 90s jail addition for Selen County and remodel, price tag, I can't remember, but at that time, the architect selected for the project, mentioned design, trends, and standards. That's what I heard you guys say the same thing from the early 90s. Pods for expansion, you mentioned that also, for the future. And I'm sorry, but over the years, you learn that that design did not fit. Do you have the expertise, does your firm have the expertise to give me a written guarantee in 20 years? We aren't gonna be looking at this again.
So, here's one of the other things. First off, I'm not gonna write you a guarantee, but I hear you loud and clear. I think what I would share with you over doing jail work for as long as I have and as long as John has and our firm has, okay? And Jim, Jim may, Jim may attest to this as well, I think, because this has come from other programmers we've talked to. Jail design is one thing. Housing is a separate item, okay? And you're going to have a design in the next year or two for your new facility based on programming numbers and things and trends that we see, right? In 20 years, okay, 20 years from now, you're gonna have the same conversation. And the only reason I know that is because we're doing it on most all county-level projects that we work on. Douglas County, if you look at that project and look at that community, the growth of that community has expanded, right, over the last 20 years. That building was built in 1997. They're just now adding 123 beds 20 years later. And if you go back to the program and you go back to the analysis that was done and everything that we did there as a group, and look at that, it actually timed out that this was the time that they needed to expand. The thing is, is it's different, a little different today than I think it was then. And then we're talking programs. In the early 90s, there wasn't a whole lot of talk about programs. I could be wrong, but it was more about locking them up-
It was bed capacity.
...and bed capacity. Today, we're actually talking about programs. We're talking about how to integrate those individuals back into society so that they can be there at the end of the day and be a member of the community. And if we're doing those things right over the next 20 years, maybe you're not adding 192 beds, maybe you're only adding 75 and they're not beds. Maybe there's something along this line that we're talking about here. Those are the types of things that as jail design goes for the next 20 years, this is hopefully the trend we start to see. Now, you were here 20, in the early 90s, that's longer than 20 years, by the way, I just did the math real quick. I can't guarantee you anything. What it can tell you is that our team is gonna sit down and listen, understand what the issues are, and create the best solution possible for this community, so that you do have the next 20 years of thinking about what it is that makes sense for this community. And giving these people, giving their communities, sorry, giving the community the ability to have programs and do things to allow those individuals to come back out into the community. have programs and do things to allow those individuals to come back out into the community.
Jeff, I'm disappointed. I mean, you're going to share your recipe with me, but not a 20-year guarantee? Come on now. Thank you.
Any, anyone else in the committee or, I want to give the, the public time to comment here too, so?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that 20 years ago, I was with the Sheriff's Office then. And when that, when that jail was built, these were the same discussions we had then, and programs were a big part of the discussion back then. Probably the biggest failure in the design at that point was the program space that we were provided. You know, we really have one room for programs. It's also, at the time, pre-trial or drug court stuff wasn't in place, and, you know, the video arraignment wasn't a, wasn't an option or a thought. Well, that, that, that room has become a video arraignment room also. So, the time to, to use this little space that's not on the pods, it's in the middle of the jail, so the inmates have to be moved down there, and then you have to be careful who you're bringing to those programs. So, it limits the inmates that you can bring into those programs. But, but programs are not new to Slayton County Jail. We've been doing programs since the jail was expanded in 95. We have a programs coordinator, and she does, we have AA and NA, we have all kinds of faith-based programs, we have fatherhood programs and things like that. So, you know, programming space is great, we need it. The issue I have now is 25 to 30% of my inmates aren't here. And the inmates that aren't here are the ones that would benefit the most from the programs that we do provide. And, and also, the, the reentry programs is something that we don't have, and that's something that we need, but that comes down to dollars too. When, when the decision's made to, to do reentry work, that's going to take dollars, and it's going to take staffing to do that. So, you know, we need to consider that when we do it, but we definitely need more space for programming in the jails. I just wanted to touch base, you know, I didn't want, I didn't want the public to get the perception that we don't do anything. We have a lot of programs in the jail, but they're not, because of space limitations, we, we're, we're in a limit, limitation on what we can do.
Those are excellent points, Roger. Anyone else from the committee wish to address the, the trainer group? This time then, I think I will open this up for public questions and/or comments. And when you step to the microphone, please state your name and address, please.
Sorry to be jumping so eagerly, I thought you were moving on to the next segment. David Norland here in Salina, 608 East Republic. And I want to just briefly mention a couple of things. I appreciate Sheriff Holden educating me on roll bars in the cells so you can't saw your way out. I'm getting an education here. And Mike, I remember even being in Concordia, reading about your escapades on the county commission. And so, I appreciate your experience over a long period of time, glad you're here. So, those are incidental partly, but I think they're relevant because I, I got my education about what was going on at Slayton County Commission, even in Concordia from the Salina Journal, which probably makes the most important person in the room, not the chair nor the commissioners, but Mr. Wiley sitting over here, because that way the public finds out. Mr. Wiley's here on a short term, and appreciate his being here. But the, the issue that I think is most important has been referred to, and that's about education. Getting the public aware of all, I dare say that maybe one in 10 people in this community, if that, really grasp the kind of programs that are necessary, the space that's needed, et cetera. So, not to be a wiseacre about this, but it seems to me that it's going to be more difficult now, given the kind of reporting that we often don't have in, in Salina and the area. And this is in the state as well, it's not just Salina. But how do you create that case? And I'm glad to have consultants who recognize that. But let me make what might seem a radical proposal, but has been tried in other, in other counties. What you're trying to do, and I, I would stand, by the way, to be educated by Andy Grievous or any, any other people here about ongoing programs, because I don't pretend to know about it, but here's my suggestion. Why don't you reduce the fees? You can't decriminalize marijuana, but other counties, including Douglas, have decriminalized that. Wichita, you know, was, has done that recently, which reduces a financial burden. I'm quoting a May fairly recent article from the University Daily Kansan, which is, of course, a university newspaper, perhaps with their bias, I don't know. But according to them, it's not necessarily that marijuana charges have been reduced, but the costs involved to the person charged have been reduced. The likelihood of being jailed has been reduced. And again, I would stand to be educated on that, I think that's an ongoing study. But it seems to me that the county needs in some public way to demonstrate, what I hear on this commission generally, is that you're looking not just at jail, but how, how and why people are incarcerated, how you can reduce that, how you can establish programs for people who are here. I think your spirits are in the right place, your heart's in the right place, but how you go about that, and even whether or not we need a jail, if we can do that kind of progressive thinking, is really critical, I think. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Lynne Meyer, and I'm from Salina, and I am part of this small group of community-concerned citizens. I'm pleased to hear what you're saying. I, first of all, I wanted to say to Jim, your comment, "Environment influences behavior", that's right on, and that's a whole lot of, it puts in perspective a lot of what I believe. And so, I'm hoping maybe if you accept, if you get the bid, then we can work together. I have talked to Sheriff Henderson and, and Mike in Reno County, a couple of us did go tour, and they're more willing to come down and be part of a bigger process as we need to. I just wanted to ask real quick, you said at, at the end of one of your comment sessions was, you were excited. And I want to know beyond your, this is a business for you, and you're hoping to get the bid for financial reasons, what that excitement is, and where does that come from over and beyond being a, a business excitement?
Well, we're, we're going to tag this one, because I know John's excitement, and, and he and I talked, and we're excited as a company because, and our justice group, because this group is trying to do something forward-thinking. There's not a lot of those out there, and that's real. And that's who we are, and that's, that's what we do. I mean, we talked about, I mean, we talk about go, no-go as a business sense on projects, whatever they may be across the country. And if, and if they are looking to just put inmates in and house them, and they're not willing to have a conversation about programs or other ways to reduce recidivism, we sometimes just say, "No-go." And, and that's real for us. The passion that we have for, personally for me, is, to me, I'm not about locking somebody up, and I don't mean that in a bad way. There's people that need to be in jail, but there are people, and it comes to some personal pieces, there are people that have made the wrong decision, and we need to help them. And if we get them back on their feet, and we get them back out in the community, then we've done the right thing. And that's real, and, and that's for me. And John will let you share a little bit.
Yeah, I guess there's two ways that, that I look at that. It's a great question, I appreciate it. One, we, we set a vision and a goal for our studio every year. There's about 22 of us in our studio right now, and at the beginning of every year, we, we talk about what our goals are, how we're going to motivate ourselves. We are focused on recovery-based solutions for clients, and we have been doing more and more of that. We, if we can, target those types of clients, we have made a concerted effort to do that so that we find people that kind of share the same goals that we may have. That's number one, and I think that's pretty pervasive across our studio right now in the type of work that we're focused on. A lot of it's recovery-based. We just added a new employee to our studio that is really more sort of behavioral health and healthcare-based so that we can kind of build our expertise in that area. The second part for me is somewhat personal. I have family members that have been incarcerated for these very reasons, so there is a reason why I get up every morning, I have two of them that are still alive, thank God, but there, there are some personal reasons why I do what I do, and then I think generally speaking, our studio as a whole has a common goal to push this effort forward. It, it needs to be based on healing people, as the folks in Sullivan County say, fixing people, you know, they need to be fixed. And these people are broken in this system, they are. And the, the role that the programs plays is actually fixing them so that they can function as citizens again. You can't take a broken person and just put them back on the street, it just doesn't work. They're going to fail again, that's why the recidivism rate's so high. So, without the programs that we've all been discussing, you'll be having the same conversations 20 years from now again if we don't help you find those programs and target the people that can be in those programs. That's not for everybody. There are some people that are hard to fix, there's no question about that. But targeting those programs and getting a team of people that are really passionate about that, we're there, we'll, we'll help you.
Well, we can't fix anyone, but we can guide them to fix themselves.
That's right, that's right.
And I'm pleased to hear that response. It sounds more like a, a heart thing as well as financial, and I think that's really big and important in, in making this decision. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Norman Manos, Salina. At a previous meeting, after the meeting was dismissed, I talked with one of the presenters, and one presenter says, "You hit the nail right on the head." Another man from the media says, "Yes, you hit the nail right on the head." Jeff, you said, "Identify the problem." What is the problem? What's causing this? This is a global issue, it's not a local. If you reduce the population, you can solve this problem, and this has been done in the past. If you look around the world, another country has reduced the population, they're solving their problem. We hear many programs to be implemented, temporary fix, not a permanent one, but we can have a permanent one. But you're going to have to make a decision that's going to be ugly. Nobody likes to be told what to do, forced to do this or that. Reduce the population. If you've had over one child, you're the problem. I'm not part of that problem, although some people will disagree with me. We don't have a right to do what we are doing. We've taken things for granted for too long. We think we can have it our way. It's not going to work. Past races, cultures have told us what we are doing is wrong. We're going to have to stop doing what we're doing, but I'm carrying on a little bit too much. An addition is a temporary delay, it's a waste of money. What we have here is a failure to communicate, and we think we can fix it with money. You can't do it that way, it won't work, we've been told this. This was told to us 150 years ago. So, if you reduce the population, you're on the road to solving this problem.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission or, or address, actually, address the, the trainer group?
Hi, I'm Gerald Gillespie from Salina here. I just had a question about the sauce, and particularly the, the amount of fiscal transparency that you see needing to go into that sauce. And I'm thinking as a frugal Kansan myself, and I know it's hard to estimate those costs and the savings you get by not outsourcing inmates and so on, but it's, it's helpful to me to have some idea of the property and sales tax increases that a proposal would have in terms of how I would vote. And I think there would be a number of other people in the community also that, because oftentimes that comes as a surprise. You have a big building project, and then you, you see the consequences when this starts to play out, and it's helpful to me to have at least a range of what I know that I'm voting on, on that. And how, how do you see that, that piece factoring into the transparency in the projects you've worked with in other communities and so on?
Yeah, no, great question. So, we do, we see that across the board. You, you need to share what that dollar or what your tax is, what that increase is, or if you're just extending it, you need to share that upfront and what you're buying. So, that's that. I will tell you, I, I was going to mention this earlier, so yes, to your point, bring that forward, be part of that, the dollars need to be part of the discussion at, at some point during those town hall meetings. It may not be the first one, it may not be the second one, but there is a time for that so that, first off, we're informed of knowing what we're trying to accomplish with the solution, and then what those dollars associate with and what the operations are. What I will tell you, the other thing I wanted to share on my backslide, since you brought it up, it, Thomas County, they actually did their own math, so I can't, can't take this math and say this is mine, but they did their own math because they are also very similar to you right on I-70. And they actually found that over 40% of the individual, or 40% of the project, sorry, on that project, 40% of it was being paid for by individuals out of town that were coming through I-70 and stopping in their location. I'm not saying that's what happens here, I don't know that for a fact or anything, but because of where you're located, that is another discussion and thought process to have. To be able to share, it's, it's a community that's paying for this, but there's also other individuals that stop in this area, going from one side of the state to Colorado to the west coast or to the east coast, and they will stop here and get gas, they will stop here at the convenience store, get dinner, lunch, stay at the hotel, whatever that may be, and they're paying for part of this as well. So, realize that as you go forward as, as a group.
Further questions? Address the group?
Joan Ratzlof, Salina. I want to say to the commission that the links to the, you know, the links that are on the county's website, on the homepage, for, specifically for this jail project, are really great to have there. You know, it's a real good resource to educate the public. And also, you know, we're fortunate enough to have access TV, and they're videotaping these things. I would suggest that, you know, this is nine in the morning, and a lot of people are at work, that, you know, or they may not get the paper, but having the video of, of these presentations, also a link to that on the county's website would be a helpful thing for the public.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission then. I, I want to thank the, your group for coming out from Topeka and, and spending the time with us. You're going to make our decision very difficult, I know that, because I, you're, you're right up there, and I know the next firm is, is the same. So, I'm confident that what we do after today, in the selection process anyway, will, will be a difficult one, but the, the firm that we select, I know, is well-qualified. I, I mean, I already have gathered that from, from what I've heard from everyone, so, any rate, any other commissioners wish to address the group? So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will be- Bringing your talent to Salina.
Thank you.
We will be opening the bids after this meeting, or at the end of the meeting, I should say.
At the end of the meeting, yes.
Yeah, and no decision will be made on the selected firm at that point, but that will be forthcoming in a, in a short period of time, I can assure you.
Excellent.
All right? Thank you again. At this time, I think we need to take about a five-minute break, and some of us can do whatever we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
...here, team process, talk a little bit about the schedule, about the value that we bring, and then the next steps of what will go on as you move forward. I think some of the things that we learned that we want to talk about from the last time, too, is Celine County right now, when it comes to their jail project, is on parallel paths. You have two parallel tracks going. One that's looking at what you can do to reduce your jail population. The other, they're saying, "We have a facility that needs to be addressed, and how do we address that facility?" Now, the Jail Population Reduction Committee has already taken some steps. You've got the pretrial risk assessment that's been implemented, been going for a little over three months, going to be evaluating how that works. There's other programs, things that will be included in this as you move forward. So as we look at this, we want to look at how we can help you find a facility that's going to support Track One as we're on Track Two, helping to look at what that facility is. These don't occur independently, but they occur side by side. We shared this last time. Our promise to you is to deliver a law enforcement center that positively impacts the people within the facility and the community surrounding it. When we say impacts the people within the facility, that includes the staff. When you think about a jail, the people that spend the most time in a jail is your staff. They're there the whole time. I know that with some of the changes going on, we'll discuss this in terms of state DOC, you're going to be in competition for retention, for recruiting good quality employees, and be able to maintain them. So we want a safe, secure facility that's going to allow the sheriff to do that. You want a safe facility for the inmates, so you don't have inmate-on-inmate violence, providing program space that's going to best prepare them for as they move back out into the community. And as far as the community, you want to have a cost-effective solution, cost-effective to build and cost-effective to operate. And that's our promise to you, is to work with you to deliver that as we move forward. So again, the team that we have here, Mike is our leader, kind of talks about our role, design leader, what's going to be involved there. I'll be the client sponsor. If you have questions or anything, I'm the one you call. I'll be there to answer it. I've met several of you, got to know you over the years, and I'll be here as part of that. And then Charles is our local representative. And I want to talk a little bit about that. Obviously, Celine County's been on this journey for a while. Even going back to before the last vote, I was following what was going on in Celine County. Obviously, since the last vote, we knew that Celine County would still need to do something. We started having the conversations about what would like, be like, to be able to provide services in a positive way to Celine County. We said, "It would be good to have a local partner that's of value, brings value to the team." And as we looked at it, we said JGR, they have the commitment to clients, commitment to providing quality service, they're a long-term representative of the county, and so we're very excited to have Charles onboard and JGR as part of our team. And I'm going to let him talk a little bit about what our interactive and collaborative role looks like.
Yeah. Again, I'm Charles Rens with Jones Gillum Rens Architects here in Salina, and I greatly appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this team, working with Shive Hattery, to be in part of this team, working for Celine County, to improve the law enforcement operations within the county. One thing I'd like to point out is the opportunity to work with Shive Hattery is a huge benefit for us. We've been involved numerous times on projects, have been asked to be teammates or to team up on local projects, and it's honestly, it's not something that we take lightly, that we do a lot. Working with architects and firms that know how to do that, that have expectations of us, put some responsibility on us to be involved in the process, that means a lot to us, to not just be a local name on the letterhead moving forward with the job. So this is a team, we've been together for, you know, five years probably, talking about this project, and we look forward to being on this, you know, on this team, part of this commitment for another, you know, several years as this comes to fruition. The, what I want to talk a little bit about is just the resources that we bring. Shive Hattery, of course, brings expertise in law enforcement facilities. They bring a greater level of expertise in law enforcement facilities than what, honestly, what we provide. But JGR, we are a firm that is familiar with doing big projects, big projects within our community, working as a team. Most recently, we were part of the team working on the USD 305 school project, $70 million worth of high schools at Salina South, Salina Central. So we bring that local expertise in managing that job as it moves from early design on through the completion of construction. Talk a little bit about, you know, the, this allows us to effectively communicate with the community, with each other, with the different entities involved in the law enforcement center. And again, our goal is to develop a plan, develop a project that is cost-effective, it's functional, it's safe, and it meets the needs of the Salina community for the long One of the, the, the things that we want to talk about again is our commitment to the community goals and objectives. Read through this list here. We want to keep Salina dollars and Salina jobs in Salina. The amount of money that we spend, that we send, you know, inmates to other communities costs the county a great deal of money annually. We want to work to save that. We want to create facilities that improve staff morale, that enable the staff to be more competitive with other facilities in the area. Ultimately, we want to create flexible solutions that support Track One of the population reduction. Remember, there's two tracks. One is population, population reduction. Two, we want to make sure that we are creating a facility that emphasizes Track One. So that involves understanding and experiencing the programs that are in development or have been developed in, as far as pretrial assessment, behavioral mental health, transitional housing, integration programs, those types of things. We want to be good stewards to the community. We want to demonstrate in this presentation an ability in balancing the best practices with the best value to the county. Again, operationally efficient solutions, and then creating the best use for the existing facility. That is one thing that JGR, we are, I will say, experts in, is a lot of adaptive reuse-type projects. Again, we're here for long-term representation of Celine County. You look at the next slide. Okay. Talk a little bit about our relationship. You've seen this slide before. This shows that interwoven relationship between JGR and Shive Hattery. The study, the expertise that comes in law enforcement facilities, probably a little heavier on the front end of this as we work towards design. As the project develops, we will define the roles of each firm, specific to whatever projects develop, and then throughout construction, we're here every day. JGR is in Salina. On a complicated project like this, things come up. We're always available to represent the community. The thing to remember is that you'll always have both Shive Hattery and JGR representing you throughout the duration of the project.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. Excellent. Well, good morning, everyone. I'm Michael Lewis with Shive Hattery. It's a pleasure to be here with you all today. I would like to talk a little bit about how we go about this process. The first step in the process, and you've seen us present before, a three-step decision-making effort. It really goes a little bit beyond that. So whether or not we are working with the community, the design committee stakeholders, the commission, the sheriff, the users, this graphic that's behind me is the effort that we will go through on every decision that we will make together. So it starts out with an understanding, an understanding of the various conditions that are in play, backed up by research. And so what you can expect from us is we will take option A, B, C, D, if there is, and I'll get to those in a minute. We will take all of those and gain an understanding about the programmatic requirements, the functional requirements, the staffing needs to support each one of these, ultimately the cost to determine the best value. We will go through that understanding and back it up then with facts on what it means. From that, we will come back to you, and we will have the discussions about all of those various conditions that are in play before we make a decision. It's an interactive process where we are together, working collaboratively with you in that. Then item four, step four, which is the next step, is our ability to take that forward and deliver that outcome. So you can expect, as we go through this process, the circle of events where each various component is taken through its work session or work requirements. Each one of the options that you've laid out, the three options, whether it's the renovation primarily, whether it goes through the booking and processing element of being built new, and what to do with the existing condition, or all new. Each one of those options gets a programmatic understanding first and a staffing understanding Once we have that functional understanding and that layout and configuration as we develop this together, it is then, at that point in time, that we can test the scenario. We fully anticipate that we will learn through the process on A, B, and C, what we would consider to be behind me, an option D. Something's going to emerge out of A, B, and C that will support, we think, another look. It's just inevitable that we, there will be a new piece of information. What's that?
It didn't advance.
It did not. Thank you. There they are. Well, there you go. When it's behind me, I can't always quite tell. Thank you, Steve. But we fully expect that we will be gaining this understanding. As a part of today's discussion, when we get a little bit further and you have a chance to see our response to the question, you'll see how we break that out. If there is an option E or any other scenario, we don't expect to see any additional impact to the county in the way we work. That's a part of our process. So we're not, I guess, to restate, we do not believe that if there is an E or an F, that will be included in how we work and what we do. Most importantly, this gets beyond what the architectural solution is. Seventy percent of the cost associated with a facility solution or a direction has to do with the staffing costs. And so our goal is to find the solution that will bring the best value to the taxpayer and be the most efficient. This is a very important point because it isn't so much the bricks and mortar, although those decisions are extremely important. If we can be more staff-efficient and effective in the way this is laid out and how it grows and expands in the future, the better. Here's a diagram of your existing facility, and, you know, at a high level, the red dots that you see on there, there are essentially four primary staffing points that are the major staffing elements. There's many, many people that work inside the building that don't work at these locations, but these are the primary drivers from a designer's perspective. And so with four staffing ports, points in the building, make sure I'm doing this, there we go. If you add it onto the building, you essentially would be adding another one of those staffing locations. To be a 24/7, 365-day operation, one staffing position takes five people, and I'm generalizing, it's a little more complicated than that, but for the sake of the discussion, it's five people. Five people to operate 24/7, 365, when you start to do the math, over a 30-year period, ballparking it without getting into the detail with you yet, it's roughly $10 million. $10 million in staffing costs over a 30-year period to have five people increase. Well, what happens when we create the solution to get something that's more efficient? There potentially is, and we believe there can be, a swing the other direction, where we look at the number of staff that you have currently, and we find a solution that optimizes the way those number of staff work, where they work, how they work. There's lots of conversations here that we need to have with you. It's not about our idea about how you staff, but it's about the ability to support what your staff are doing to be the most effective. But again, what happens? If we do something as a designer that adds five additional positions, then the long-term costs of the project go up to $10 million. If we do something together that can hold that in check, then the long-term costs could go down $10 million. So the point of that example is, if we need to spend another $100,000 in the cost of the building to add cameras, to put some technology into the building that supports staff efficiency, we should. It's just good business decisions. Here's another way to look at, look at that staff number, and it's a different layer within this, but if we take some of the numbers that we have been provided to date in terms of the average hourly cost that you're currently paying, and then we look at what the Kansas Department of Corrections has indicated that they intend to do going forward, there's a delta of about $4 an hour. What can we do together to make this the best-practice environment so that people can be retained, people can be interested in working here, and support your long-term mission? Another way to look at it, and Charles and Steve mentioned this earlier, if you're transporting out of county, you're spending about 58% of your money to transport out, whether that's the transportation costs or the per diems you're paying to another jurisdiction. Where on the left-hand side, the optimized staff approach, about 60% of those dollars would essentially stay in the county and support your community. So these are just all very important considerations that are not just the architecture, it's about the way it works. And the last slide that I'm going to talk about here today for this part of the discussion has to do with the number of inmates in the facility and the targeted population. We talked about alternative programs earlier. What is that? You're beginning to gather data, pretrial information and data. That's that 40% number that's over there. As you get more and more data on that, we'll be able to identify with you who are good candidates to be in the alternative programs and not necessarily be in the long-term physical cell environment, 40% of the population. The reality is, you're just starting that data stream, and we are going to be wanting to work with you throughout the life of the project as one-year data, two-year data, three-year data comes onboard. The design needs to be flexible, so it changes with the trends and with the direction, and you'll have that commitment from us.
Okay. We had this slide earlier, talked about that process as we get together. There's also then the layer that overlays that, that brings in the whole criminal justice system. We want to be talking to courts. We want to find out what courts are supportive of, what we can do that's going to help them better process inmates and arrestees through the process. Obviously, I think Jimmy referred to is the water barrel. If that's, pick, it can open up more, and people can move through the process quicker, then that helps keep numbers down. So we want to involve courts. What kind of support is there for, you know, video arraignment, additional, maybe a courtroom at the facility? Don't know yet, but we want to be able to involve that group. Last time we got together, we talked about the 150-day roadmap. I think that the value of that is just be able to say, "You've done a lot of work now. What would it look like to be able to move Celine County forward to possibly a vote in the spring?" Vote, obviously, you need to give funding. Shive Hattery, I don't think we mentioned last time, but we've been extremely successful in getting votes passed first time. We will, whoops, want to jump myself ahead. We look forward to be able to have Celine County be a part of that. We understand, you're not doing studies for study's sake. You need a solution. You need the public to be able to say, "Yes, we support what's going on," and we've been successful in doing that. We look forward to doing that with you. This shows the graph that shows going to potentially a spring vote here. If we didn't do that, what it would look like if we were to move out to spring of 2021? Obviously, when we get together, we even set that schedule, it's going to be a collaborative process. You have, ultimately, it's your decision. But if we move out a year, and we're seeing about 5% increase on construction costs, $40 million project there could be $2 million extra in construction cost. So we'll help you make those decisions. We started looking at that in terms of actually what that might look like with regular scheduled meetings. If we're able to get started in that first part of next month, coming out here every couple of weeks, again, get information, respond to it, bring it back, and gather that as we work towards the final solution that's going to be best for you. This is the timeframe when you have the ability to impact costs the most. We haven't even put pencil or paper, no plans or anything, but as we're looking at the programs, we're looking at what it means to be in two separate facilities, in a combined facility, you have the greatest opportunity at this time to impact those costs. So we want to really make the most of that. This is building that foundation moving forward. In addition to the schedule, we'd also have some discussion at that point in terms of what the delivery options might be. Impact there, both of our firms have experience in all the delivery options out there, design bill, CM at risk, CM agency, design bill, discuss with you what the advantages of each are, pros and cons, and help arrive at a decision of what that is, and that'll help inform our costing as we move forward also. We dropped off this morning the fee sheet, and we wanted to use this one just to kind of talk, not so much about what the solution is, but how, as you open up and review the fee sheet, what was included in that? What we're looking at is just developing a baseline effort, or a baseline to evaluate all the other options with. Jimmy, your report, I think the greenfield site, option C, was 184,995 square foot roughly. We took that, took that, and just at a real high level, again, with our experience, said we might see a range in that of 157 to 174. Again, together, as we sat down and we whittled that down and figured out where that's at, we'll be able to come up with that final number. But we looked at that, and then we said, "That's a baseline of what that option C might be." Baseline of the cost, again, a project cost of 74 to 81.5 million. Project cost, not construction cost. You should go, we'd be looking at ways to go below that. Obviously, we reduce the number of beds. If we decide we can reduce beds, that reduces costs. If we look at the option of renovation scenarios versus the other, there's a potential also to reduce some costs. So we know that from looking at that, again, the baseline cost to construction that we based the fee on, you'll open up later, was based on that $70 million construction cost. We know that there was that, that range that was there. I think it was 43 to 81 was the range that was given of the projects. If we can deliver a 40 or 50 million dollar project, that's what we'll want to do for you. I don't know if Mike said last time, but we've told people before, we've been in this business long enough, we're not here just to design and build more beds. If there's ways that we can do stuff that provides the community what they need in terms of addressing the inmate population you have with less number of beds, that provides more program space, and that's what we want to work with you for.
Real quickly, Steve, before we leave this slide, just another footnote. We estimate that it's going to be somewhere around 35,000 hours for our architects, engineers, and design team to deliver this project from start to completion. 35,000 hours. I bring that up because that is not a small effort. You need to have somebody here, Charles and Shive Hattery, and our belief that we'll be able to work with you for the several years we'll be together to make this project successful. The pre-design phase, this first phase that's fixed, that represents about 1,400 hours of time within that 150-day window. Just a couple of facts, it's in, it's in the response that we gave you in the envelope, but I just wanted to pull that out.
Appreciate that, Mike. So basically, just to kind of bracket this, the promise that we're giving you to deliver a cost-effective solution, a law enforcement center that's going to positively impact the people within it and the community surrounding it. We've done it before. We look forward to coming together with Saline County, or Celine County, and doing it with you here. So, how are we doing? About it?
To the second, with my interjection.
To the second, yep.
We look forward to question and answer now.
Well, thank you. Impressive review here to get us started.
Steve, do you want to hand out our, we have copies of this material, if it's helpful for you to have in front of you during questions? Sorry, Andrew.
Quite all right. There you go. That's probably right. I'm guilty.
I am, too. That's white.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So at this time, I'm going to open it up for the commission for questions for the Shive Hattery group that they might have, or I also want the jail committee to be involved in their questions. So, who's first?
I'll break the ice. So when you're talking about the success of these other projects that passed the first time, well, Celine County has already failed in 2014, so how many of these other projects were you the second architect that had to come in and figure out? What kind of challenges do you think you'll face with that, with our situation?
Oh, that's a good question. As I look back, of the ones I've been involved with, I'm not sure I've had that many that we've come in as a second one. I think that the big thing, though, is really from my standpoint, hearing what the community, what they felt like that last time, what didn't happen, and anytime you see that, it's understanding what didn't happen and what you can improve on going forward. I don't know, Mike, you get some?
Andrew, the majority of the time, we're hired first. We do end up in a situation, to your question, where we come in after the fact. The one recent example that I guess I would mention was Dallas County, Iowa. And so that's not going to be real obvious to you what that means, but let me, there's an architect there that did three referendums for that client, and that architect didn't do the analysis that we're talking about. They did an architectural solution, and they kept going to the voter, and the voter kept turning that down. So the client hired us to do this operational analysis, and we did the staffing, the programmatic review, all the things we've talked about here today, and we did that. And once that information was made available to the public, that project passed on its fourth try. In fact, we were just the consulting professional on that to provide the information. That architect ended up doing the resulting work with the construction manager and the owner that brought that forward, but that's fine. The good news is, they got the kind of information they needed in order to be successful. And that's really what this is about. We provide, spend a lot of time with you, understanding the specifics and the why, and backing it up with facts, so when you go to the public, it answers their questions. Here's why this is needed, and that's, that's in large part what this first part is all about. Hope that helps.
Is there a magic number, or even a percentage basis, of greenfield versus renovation on costs? I mean, is there, could you throw one, a number at me and make mine stick?
I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, I mean, let's just say that a renovation project, you know, the square footage, just kind of a rough cost of renovating versus...
Now, are you talking about renovating a non-jail into a jail?
No, I'd be talking about renovating the current jail.
The existing jail.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know that there is a magic cost. What I would go back to, though, is the slide that we looked at. I feel like, you know, with a four-post jail right now for 190 beds, if you were to do the planned expansion of another 64, you're at 250 in a five-post jail. We didn't talk about, but the project I did down Fort County, right now sits a 260 bed, and it's a four-post jail, one less post. So you could go in and do renovation, and we will, that's part of what we would work through, is look at what those costs are, but a lot of times, what the big decision-maker comes for the county is, what's it cost long-term to operate it? And if we're able to save, you know, over 20-year lifecycle, the cost, 5, 10, 20 million dollars, a lot of times, they say, "We'd rather spend a little more maybe upfront for the capital cost because of the savings that we get from the operational down the road." So I don't know, we'd have to get in, and that would be part of what we do, is evaluate that facility.
I do like...
No magic number.
Okay. I didn't, I had a feeling there wasn't, but I like the fact that you, you're identifying staffing costs, not for, just for a new jail, but for 10 or 20 years down the road, and this is what it's going to cost you if you do it this way, so...
And again, I think, you know, we've talked to Roger, Sheriff Solan. It's going to be a real competition, I feel, for good detention and corrections officers. With Ellsworth just less than an hour away, if they're paying 18 and a quarter an hour, Celine County, I mean, I've already heard from Marty, the sheriff over in Ellsworth, he goes, "Oh, my..." he goes, oh, my goodness. You know, we need to have some, we need a facility that people feel safe and secure in, that as an officer, they can come to work, feel proud of what they do, have good morale, but be competitive with that. So I think it will be real big for Saline County.
Close to 50% of our projects have a renovation element in it. It's not just new in Greenfield. And so we have a good blend of that in our, in our experience. The thing about a renovation project that I would say is fundamentally important is what is its long-term purpose? How will it support? Because the last thing you want to do is go in and do something that's only going to last eight to 10 years. If you're going to renovate that, it has to be able to meet your long-term need equally as the new component does. And so that's, that's the trick here. We have to figure out what will that existing facility support in that big-picture plan.
And I would just chime in, the phrase you've heard us use several times here is best value, best value for the, for Saline County long-term. So if that's reduced staffing, if it's more efficient facilities that give you that value, like I said, it's, it's, might be money well-spent upfront to look at the, the cost savings over 20, 30 years.
I think we've all identified the problem that we're spending too much money out of county, and we have some overcrowding. We do, though, have a philosophical divide in the community and probably on the commission on how to handle that. The easy way is to build a 450-person jail and have that not happen anymore. My goal is to get something that passes and not do this a third time. So what, what do you see your role in helping us come together and figuring out what's best for Saline County?
I guess, as I've considered this more, you know, we've talked about that D option, and I feel that that's going to be ultimately, I think, as we get in and look at this, it's going to be a D option that somehow blends those things, that provides that flexibility. I mean, I could see, I think I saw, Jim, when you did your last report, and Sheriff made the comment afterwards, he goes, I hadn't put two and two together in terms of the increased average length of stay, how coincided with all the people going out of county. So I'm sure a lot of people are saying, if we can bring everybody back here and reduce that, then what do the numbers look like? I don't know. If there's an ability to do some kind of a blended facility that has some flexibility built into it, where maybe you design shell space that could go up to 400 bed, but maybe you only build out, I don't know, throw out a number, 300, whatever the number is, with the ability to be flexible as we get more data on the efficacy of some of the pre-trial assessment, the other programs that come into place, that might be something that we'd look at doing, and say, we can get that initial capital cost down, we don't have to pay for all the staffing for that until we need it, but we have that flexibility then as we would grow. We also understand, just going back to the whole discussion about the existing facility, we need to come up with a good solution for how that existing facility can be used. And we've already started kind of bouncing ideas off, you know, potentially, you know, some kind of a transitional unit, maybe a crisis intervention center, maybe there's programs for the community that could go in there. There might be opportunities for that, maybe a courtroom of some kind that could go in that, but we need to come up with a good solution if that's the decision going forward. So I think finding that, that blended solution is going to be how that we can get the, and I don't know what that's going to be just yet, but I think that there will be something that could come out of that.
I think I would like to add to this conversation that it's entirely normal to have a difference of an opinion right now in where you are at in the process. That's to be expected. So as we go through and gather the information and put together that, the why, what does it mean, how does it work, what's it going to take, kind of conversations, kind of information, that's where our goal with you is to get to that ultimate solution, so you don't have to go through this again. And, and we will know that we have done our job well together when we get to that point and say, this is it, this is the direction, and we have consensus built on that. But it's going to take time, that 150-day window, and that effort that we talked about earlier, we just have to go through that process together in order to get to that answer.
Hopefully, Mike had answered.
Absolutely.
A question I have is, what is the percentage of your projects that are completed within your final cost estimate and project budget?
I didn't bring along my sheet that had that. We had that prepared for the first time, and I didn't bring my number. It was, I mean, Mike, you remember what that was?
Well, we did have it prepared in the previous presentation we gave, but we, we are sitting about 85% of our projects that are, that are on that target. There are a few outliers in that process where we're a little bit off. It really kind of comes down to market condition. That's one of the major factors, and we have been working diligently with contracting partners to make sure we understand exactly how those market conditions are affecting. We oftentimes set a budget with a client two years in advance, and then in two years in advance, if steel tariffs have happened and some of those things have taken place as an example, then we have to be able to accommodate that. And so what we do, just for what it's worth, is we put a contingency into the project. We put a 10% contingency in to deal with that very thing. And so as long as we're all making appropriate decisions together and we're not spending that entire contingency, then there's going to be about 5% left in that bank, so that when it goes out to bid, that will take the market conditions into play, if that makes sense, if I explain that well. So we're not perfect, you know, there are occasional things that happen in the process, but about 85% of our projects are on track.
I would add too, Jim, a lot of that depends too on what the delivery method is. More of the projects we've worked on lately have involved a construction manager, and frequently, when a construction manager comes onboard, they're taking the program information we've developed, they're doing their own estimating now, and they're doing their own schedule, so that becomes, we advise, we can tell them what we've seen, but ultimately, a lot of times, the construction managers are the ones that set those two.
Speaking of the construction manager, what are the pros and cons of that?
Pros and cons? I would say that from what I see, the biggest pro of a construction manager is, I'm going to give you two. If you get them involved early and they're involved with the design team, they can really help us in evaluating the different kinds of systems that might be going, finishes going into a facility. You know, we're going to do brick, we're going to do precast, we're going to do rooftops, we're going to do airhand, you know, what, they can help us evaluate those systems and give you kind of a good, better, best solution you can make decisions from. The other pro, I would say, for a CM, particularly when you get out into rural areas, is the ability potentially to get more local involvement in the construction process. They will go out and actively solicit the painters, the drywallers, the dirtwork guys there locally. If you do design bid build in a project this size, this could be a potentially large project. You get people come out of, I don't know, Kansas City, maybe Wichita, Denver, and a lot of times, they'll bring their consultants or their subs that they're used to working with. Nothing wrong with them, you probably get a good project, but it seems like less opportunities sometimes for the local guys. So I'd say the collaborative opportunities is big pro.
And I would say with the construction management at-risk process, that as we've been involved with it, and this line of schools were done on a construction management at-risk, it was very, very beneficial having them involved throughout the design stages, and that's throughout the entire design phase, from schematic design even into CDs, as you're looking at spaces that you're designing, the, the materials that you're using. We looked at hundreds of, you know, cost options is what we call it, about hundreds of cost options, to know what everything, you know, costs, the decisions that we made, how that looked at, you know, with the big picture, the entire project. So that, 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 that cost evaluation is, is very, very good. And to have them involved early on means they also are familiar with what your goals and objectives are, rather than coming in at the end, looking at some drawings, and just starting to build. It is helpful when they have a little skin in the game, you know, being involved from the earlier stages.
Who was the construction manager on the school projects?
It was McCown Gordon. We actually had multiple delivery methods on the school projects. We had McCown Gordon doing the larger projects. We did do design bid build on all the, on all the elementary school, middle school projects.
We'd actually talked, potentially on this project, if there's a remodeled component with a new, there could be potentially two delivery options that you might be looking at based on each one of them, so.
Who would pick that construction manager?
You would.
Has, has Chive Hattery and JGR worked together on other projects, or is this your first? That would be my first question. And if, if so, I mean, and assuming that you would be awarded the, the project, what would be JGR's role? How, how would you accord, what would serve process in this?
Our involvement and our, to answer your question, working on a specific project, no, we have not been, or we have not worked together.
I guess I would say it feels like we have because we've been talking about this project for years.
Yeah. For, for a number of years, we have been in communication. And to be honest with you, you know, there's something to working together as a, as a team. So this is, this is a team that we were all, we've been all in with for a long time. We didn't pursue other teams to, to be involved with just for the sake of trying to be involved with, with the project. We only want to be involved with the project that we feel is going to be a successful project, a successful collaboration. So no, you know, we haven't, we haven't worked specifically on a project, but, you know, I would say the, the relationship has been developed over, over a number of years.
I might add too, that just from, when you look at justice projects, once, once a county gets their justice project done, you're probably not going to see another one for some time. Chive Hattery, though, we're very used to going into, to communities where there's considerable distance, and the first thing we always ask ourselves, is there value to having a local partner on this? In some cases, we're doing one down in Salem, Missouri, and we're on it on our own, and it's a five-hour drive. But as we looked at Saline County and what was going on here, we also looked at JGR and their experience and what they brought, we said, you know, I think there's some real value to having them as a partner on this. And so we're used to doing that when that makes sense to the community and brings value to the community. The fact that they've recently done that on schoolwork, they're used to working that together, I feel that we got, they're good makings for a good partnership on it.
And according to the booklet, I mean, Steve Davis would then be the project client sponsor, primary point of contact, et cetera?
I'm it. I'm it. You need anything, you call me in. If I don't know the answer, I'll find who does.
And, and I would emphasize, at the same time, as this project goes on, I'll probably turn into your ultimate point of contact. You, you ask about responsibilities of the, the project. We'll be involved in the study aspect of the project, we'll be involved in design, we'll be involved in construction document production, construction administration. So you saw that one graph, it's pretty heavy on the Chive Hattery, and then it gets a little heavier on the JGR side as that project goes. See, advantage of being local, the advantage of, you know, during construction, you, it's, it's obvious that, you know, we would probably take on a more significant role, we would be that point of contact, primarily because when an issue comes up, we're over there that morning, we're over there in 15 minutes if necessary, but, but, yeah, that's, kind of helps define those responsibilities.
The primary design would go through Chive Hattery.
Correct.
I mean, as far as the justice center, design, you know?
You bet.
And then, I get it.
And my role as the lead designer is to bring forward that ultimate solution, because you're relying on Chive Hattery's specific experience in that regard, but we will work very closely because we want to make sure that we understand, not only from your perspective, what's important, but also from a local designer's perspective, what's important. It's a combination of both. I may have mentioned this before when we were last here, about 25% of the project relates very specifically to detention and security design, and will certainly be supported by JGR in that process, but the majority, however, the majority of that work, that 25% will stay with Chive Hattery throughout. So when it's selecting the security systems, working with you on that, the detention systems, everything that relates to what it means to be a jail, that's Chive Hattery's expertise in addition to the planning.
Are there, are there other questions or comments from commissioners or jail committee members? Andrew, you have something?
On your, on your previous Greenfield site projects, what have you done with the existing facilities? And assuming that Saline County does go with a Greenfield site, what, what expertise do you bring to the table that prevents us from being here again in 20 or 25 years?
Well, the, the existing facilities, it becomes kind of quite diverse in what's done with it. In one case, I think I had mentioned in the prior interview process about Polk County, they located a Greenfield site 14 miles from downtown Des Moines. They reused the existing facility, the downtown jail, they reused that as a processing center for the courts. So it became a holding facility and a temporary processing. That's one example. Another one would be the, what Steve's alluded to, in a crisis intervention center or a behavioral health center, where the existing facility gets converted to a, a very important purpose, but a lesser security need purpose in the way it's utilized to help deal with alternative programs.
The other thing, we've had some initial conversations, but, you know, what, you have both the PD and the sheriff in there. If sheriff's department move, what's PD needs? I mean, is there ability that they might need to expand? So there could be office expansion, I think Mike made the comment about the court expansion, obviously real preliminary, but just as we've looked at, we've kind of said, could we do this? You know, could these kind of things be appropriate in there? So it may be, and I know there's differences of opinion of this, but maybe the kitchen and the laundry expand there, and it becomes the central kitchen and laundry that goes out to the jail. Pros and cons to that, but there's, it'd be looking at those kind of things. What's it being used for now, and how could it possibly be transitioned?
Whatever it is, in the end, that's right for this solution, it ultimately needs to be understood when you go back to the voter. It needs to be understood what that's purpose is going to be. It's valuable infrastructure to the county, it's, it's a component, so how will that be, how will that play out in this process? We have, we have to be able to answer that question as we go through this.
We've actually had some smaller, much more antiquated facilities, and the county decision was, we'll just make it into secure storage. But again, that was much smaller, so probably not appropriate here.
Okay, I, before I open it up to the public, I will call one more time for commissioners or jail committee, Mr. Robertson.
Just one quick question. In my career, I've had one project where we increased capacity and required less staff. Part of that dynamic is that the sheriff's office is currently, or in many cases, already understaffed, and so when you build and add capacity, it is, it is almost impossible to reduce staff, especially when you put in program staff, non-custody staff. In that, in that list that you had earlier of your successful projects, how many required less staff when you opened?
In the list that we've put up, to year one, I would say we have five, where we actually were able to look at the number of staff and be able to identify a new strategy. In, in, in the one that I would highlight more specifically, the client made a decision to change the supervision philosophy of the facility, in going from an indirect supervision philosophy to a direct supervision philosophy. And so it went from what was a very intensive scenario to a less intensive scenario. But we had to go through that conversation to make sure a new philosophy was the right philosophy to make, to, to go down that road. So there, you know, it just really is, as you've said, one, our five, it really just takes some time to go through that and understand that bigger picture.
I would agree, though, Jim, it is not unusual to build a new facility, particularly some of the smaller ones we work on, they're so understaffed right now that they just have to get up to the staffing level they need to be right now, so it's not unusual.
Further questions, comments from committee members? If there are none, I will open it up this time for questions for Chive Hattery from the public. If they're, okay?
Don't be shy.
I'm learning not to be. Lene Meyer from Salina. We are a small group of concerned citizens that want to advocate for the best thing for, for Saline County. And we didn't hear much about your, your experience with programming, what types of programming you've seen work, and what, what you see of being helpful. The other thing is, if we, when we choose to have a community conversation... The other thing is, if we, when we choose to have a community conversation, is there anyone from your staff available to talk if we feel that would be helpful?
Mike, I think we were talking about the programming, you had some thoughts on that?
Well, thank you for your question. In terms of the programming, from an inmate programming standpoint, or an arrestee, I should say better, and what we do, we need to get into an understanding of the inmate profile, so that we can begin to split out and understand who needs to be in the facility and who can look at one of these alternative programs and not be in the facility. I think the pre-tile program information that I believe Annie is starting up, or maybe through a recommendation from the past study, that, that data stream is beginning to happen. This, we didn't hit on it to a large degree, but we hit on, that's that 40%, if you remember that slide that we put up there, it's the 40% population base of who can be a candidate to not be in the facility and get the support services they need from counselors, programmers in another setting. So, we will look at that in great detail.
I think the other thing is, we'll want to be looking at some kind of behavioral mental health component, whether that means a separate unit, or provide space for individual counseling, group counseling, whatever the sessions to be able to, for that to occur. They also then, the biggest thing, I think, is because this is so new for the county, is to design flexibility into the space, so that as those programs come and develop, there's space that can accommodate those as they, as they work out. We just finished recently a, part of a team that did a criminal justice assessment over in Jackson County, Missouri. A lot of different programs that came out of that, so, you know, would like to take some of those, take a look, see if those would be appropriate here or not, but it's different, it's unique for each county. But I think that the behavioral health, the transitional units, be able to provide for people as they're preparing to go back into the community is extremely important. We need those spaces to do that.
And, and so, we've kind of addressed the, what the possibilities are, but the question, will we have a representative there? The answer to that is simply yes. We would be present to walk through and hear the community's conversation, what it is that's important, and then take that forward into what that means as options. We, we very much want to have an active ear with the community and an understanding of what those concerns are. So, yes, we will be present.
Another example I give recently within our office, Broadlands Hospital in Des Moines, recently added a behavioral health unit to the hospital. They decided that, the, the community decided that would be good to do because there would be opportunities there to provide services that wouldn't be in an institutional setting. Some of the care and some of the treatment that's provided there may be appropriate in an institutional setting, but again, as we have that conversation in the community, is there an opportunity for involvement with other entities, the hospitals that could have those facilities, that could hopefully provide some of those services before anybody ever had to get to the institution?
Okay, further?
Thank you, appreciate the questions.
Norman Adams, Salina. Neither firm has said, comma, told you, comma, how to reduce the population out there.
Well, I don't feel that that's the role necessarily of an architectural firm, that would be more a role of our.
Well, okay, so then you're going to have to go back and watch the recording of what the first firm said, because you have asked questions of the second presenter, that you did not ask the first presenter. The first presenter should have the right for rebuttal to answer that same question. It will help with your decision. And we discussed before, it comes down to cost. The figures I've seen on this screen, if you present that to the people out there... There's another option out there. Do you know what the capacity of this building is? Any of you? I mean, if you want to answer, don't find, if you don't find.
Well, we're, we're looking at you to address the, the architectural firm on, on questions of their proposals, that's, that's the purpose of, of this, but go ahead with your...
Well, I'm, I'm bringing a comment to the commissioners, and, because that is what affects your decision.
Go ahead with your point, I don't, I'm not following you.
The problem is, or the solution is, it's out there. Nobody talks about how to reduce the population. It's not funny.
I've, it's not, you know, that's not a question that the county commission can answer, I can assure you of that, nor, we couldn't rule on that. Does anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission, thank Shivehattery and, and JGR and your associates for your well-put-together presentation. And any further comments from commissioners? I thank you very much.
Thank you for attending today.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been an absolute pleasure being here with you today, thank you very much.
Well, and as we stated before, there will be a, a decision coming forth on which firm we're gonna, going to deliver this to, before August 30th. Hopefully, we can get it done before that time, but that's our deadline to get that, that part of the process accomplished. And so, Andrew, are we going to bring back the other firm for our next item number five?
Yes.
Okay.
We can take a five-minute recess and go from there.
That would be very good. Five-minute recess and we'll, we'll go again here, so, thank you.
Are you missing something?
Enjoyed it.
Enjoyed it.